Okay. Welcome, everybody. The time is 6:30 PM on February 6th. I'll now call to order this meeting of the Bridgewater Town Council. Tonight's meeting is actually a joint meeting between the Bridgewater Town Council, the Finance Committee, and the Bridgewater Rainham School Committee. Tonight's meeting is being aired live on BTV Channel 22 and recorded for future broadcast. I'd first like to open by thanking our Finance Committee representatives, our School Committee representatives, and our superintendent for joining us this evening, and I'd invite our School Committee to open their meeting.
Great, thank you. I will call to order the Bridgewater Rainham School Committee meeting at 6:33 on February 6th. February 6th.
Great, thank you. So tonight, we look forward to hearing a little bit about the school's success plan, and more specifically, the budget required to accomplish that. Maybe I would turn it over to our town manager for a quick introduction, and then we can get into it.
Absolutely. No, that's, thank you very much, Mr. President. So as we do every year, we strive to get a balanced budget, and that's obviously a lot of work, but we have council resolution, council budget resolution, and we have budget guidelines that sort of guide our process. This is part of that process called for in the charter. This joint meeting sort of kicks off our sort of joint efforts to come up with a budget. And I will say while the bud, formation of the budget is my responsibility on the town side, I don't do it without the help of the superintendent, the School Committee, our Finance Director, Finance Committee, and the Budget and Finance Committee. So they're very helpful as we step through this process. For those that haven't been through it, each year, we focus on delivering a very sustainable budget. What do I mean by that? We want a budget that's going to provide us cash solvency, budget solvency, long-term solvency, service-level solvency, reserve solvency, capital solvency, there's a lot of solvency, and maintain our bond rating. So with those guidelines, we sort of, at a 30,000-foot level, we try to develop a budget. This year's budget objectives are spelled out in the budget resolution. I won't bore the whole crowd with that, but I can say, when we do revenue projections, so our budget is really driven by revenues. Unlike, you know, perhaps a corporate budget, our budgets are all driven by revenues. We only can spend what we take in. So you would think that those revenues would be very predictable. Sometimes they are, when it has to do with real estate taxes, they're very predictable. They can only go up 2.5% per year, barring any override vote or debt exclusion vote of the voters. So we very carefully look at the revenues that can fluctuate year to year. These are referred to as local receipts for us. So we do look at local receipts, and we have seen, obviously on the state level, we've seen some dramatic reductions in sales and quarterly income tax projections, and so we are also seeing some significant reductions or slowing down in our local receipts, in our building permits, in our electrical permits, in our local fees, and so forth. And so generally, for those that are local government, financial wonks, local government really can be a reflection of the, where the economy is headed. And so we look at the economy, we look at motor vehicle excise, we look at leasing, do car leasing, we look at trends and projections. We do a five-year projection, and we do a five-year look back when we're estimating a lot of our revenues. This year will be a little different because we'll be much more attuned to what's happened over the last 18 months with slowdown in building, slowdown in our revenue growth generally, so we'll be quite attentive to that. So I will say, over the last few years, relative to this joint meeting, over the last few years, we've worked very closely with the district and Rainham to make sure that we're doing as much as we can do to support quality education within the district. We've had over the past, you know, probably, over the past year, I guess, or a number of years, but certainly over the past year, we've had very helpful financial discussions with the superintendent and his staff, as well as Rainham and Rainham's Finance Director. So I think we have a good working relationship, and I sincerely appreciate that, and want to make sure that we continue to have that great relationship regardless of the barriers or the hurdles that we face, and we all know there are lots of hurdles to face. My preliminary budget submission, I filed with the council on February 1st, as is required by the charter. We are tentatively calling for a revenue share increase of 2%. We have bandied about that revenue share term quite a lot, and so let me tell you what that means in terms of the district, in terms of us. About six or seven years ago, we proposed sharing any of our revenue increases, or most of our revenue increases, proportionally with the district. So there was not going to be any bickering back and forth like the old days. We wanted to try to create as consistent and predictable a process as we possibly could. So we created this revenue share model, part of making sure that the district would understand it and could buy into it, as well as Rainham buying into it and understanding it, was that we had to be completely transparent. So we are completely transparent with our numbers, so I'm going to take the next five hours and go through all of our revenues. Just kidding.
Briefly, Mr. Dutton.
It's good to have you back, Mr. Fitzgibbons. Somebody's got to keep me on track. Anyway, so we are very committed to making sure that we can be in a position where we can share those increases in revenues on a proportional basis, and as I say, we work to be as transparent as possible with our books, with our projections, with our trend analysis, and so forth. So I will, as April 1st comes, as I do every year, I will present a balanced budget to the council. It may not be what everybody wants, but it certainly will be formulated with a lot of participation from, as I say, the Finance Committee, the Budget and Finance, and the district, and Rainham to some extent as well. So I appreciate this meeting. I think this is a good opportunity just to, for us to understand, you know, where our concerns are. Obviously, it's for local receipts and the revenues that we see stagnating, or in some cases, reducing. And I know the district, you know, has certain expense drivers that they've got to contend with, as do we. So that just gives you sort of a broad overview of kind of what I think the meeting is all about, and gives you an overview of, and some idea of where we're coming from as we formulated the February 1st budget, and as we will formulate the April 1st budget.
Great, thank you very much. I guess, would anyone from the School Committee care to present?
I think we'd like to defer to the superintendent.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore, Mr. Dutton. I just want to start by echoing Michael's comments. We have had several meetings, productive meetings, positive meetings, going back to the summer. I know Mr. Moore joined us at one of those meetings, and so I do just want to echo that. We do have a very good relationship and, you know, plan to continue that. I think the more we work together, and I think one of the things that we were able to accomplish this year is to get Rainham and Bridgewater and the schools all in the same room, and I think that has made a difference because we were able to have those early conversations about what the budget potentially may look like. I did present to the School Committee and to the community in January our preliminary FY '25 budget. I believe I did send a copy over, so hopefully you had a chance to see that. I know several of you were at the meeting, so I appreciate that. That budget is reflective of our student success plan. Our student success plan is our five-year strategic plan. It is, that budget was driven based on that. We're, you know, the number that was presented certainly was a lofty number, but we wanted to be inclusive and reflective of everything that was in that plan. We asked all of our principals, district administrators, department heads to include everything that they felt as though that they needed to run a high-quality school system, whether it be in the immediate future or throughout the life of the student success plan. And so that number that you had seen was a 15% increase over the previous year's budget. We certainly know that was a very significant increase, and one that may or may not be supported, but we didn't want to not include what we felt were our needs and wants for the district in order to be successful. That being said, obviously, the night of the School Committee or that afternoon, we had learned our chapter, our state aid numbers, and so as we were preparing this preliminary budget, we didn't have that information, and so we weren't 100% sure in terms of, you know, what the aid would look like, what corresponding assessments may look like to the towns, and so we didn't have that information that evening, so we really weren't able to factor all that in. Obviously, that information has come out. I would say we're less than, you know, certainly disappointed, less than pleased with our increase in Chapter 70, in Chapter 71, which is transportation. When you look at what we've received the last number of years from the state in terms of Chapter 70, we've had double digits, double-digit percentage increases, anywhere from $3 to $4 million over the previous year. For FY '25, we are slated to only receive $500,000 additional dollars, $500, $500-plus than last year. That's a significant reduction from what we're used to, and obviously, you know, that, the remaining burden unfortunately gets placed onto the towns. And so now, you know, it becomes the difficult process of looking at our budget that we've presented, or that I presented to the School Committee, and looking at what we know is state aid, looking at what our cost drivers are going to be, and, you know, where we can make reductions in the overall number. Just to kind of give you, shared some of this information that evening, but just to kind of, you know, provide a quick overview. You know, we're looking at roughly $1 million in salary increases. That doesn't even include cost of living increases. That is just for our current negotiated contracts. We actually have three of our bargaining units in the process of negotiating now. We have four altogether. So that's, that number right there is not reflective of what potentially may be settled and agreed upon. That number is really just for staff to move on their current salary scales. When we look at transportation, transportation is increasing by almost $2 million. You know, we did enter into a new transportation contract with the CNE bus lines, but what we're finding is that, you know, we have some unexpected transportation increases. Certainly, it ebbs and flows with the cost of fuel. Some months, it may be over, some months it may be under, but we're also finding that because we're having new students move into the district, and that require transportation as part of, say, their individual education plan, or they're moving into the district but are being placed in an out-of-district placement. You know, there's a significant increase to that transportation. We obviously try to forecast for potential move-ins, but, you know, when we, when we do try to do that, you know, we're not always 100% close to that number. Just for example, just since the beginning of this year, we're about $700,000 over than what we anticipated in transportation. It was two additional vans that were put on for in-district transportation, and then a number of students that moved in that required out-of-district transportation. So those costs are certainly driving. Health insurance, which I know is not unique to the school district, it's an everywhere increase, but between the active employees and retirees, we're looking at about a $1 million increase. We were told by our insurance advisor to plan on a 10% increase. Those numbers will be coming out later in the spring, so hopefully we'll have, see a savings there as well. An increase in special education tuition for our students requiring either a day school, residential program, residential day school, or residential, full residential, or our collaboratives. So that's $700,000 plus, and then utilities. We just had to enter into new agreements, our utility agreements, we're three to four, five years old, depending on the utility. Obviously, those are up, and cost of utilities are up, so we're anticipating another increase of $500,000. So when we look at that, we're looking at, and that's not even, you know, any new items that we're proposing, those are just those current cost drivers, about $5.5 million. So we have to then somehow account for that. When we look at what we potentially may have for, I guess we'll say revenue aid coming in, we're about a $3 million, $3.2 million difference from what we're hopeful to get by the towns, but obviously, that number could change. It could go up, it could go down, depending on, you know, what the towns are able to support us at. So, you know, having to make up $3.2 million is not going to be easy. Obviously, our priority first and foremost is to try to be able to reduce some of these cost drivers if we can. If we can't, then obviously, we'll look at things first before we do any type of personnel actions, but that's the reality that we're currently faced with. So internally, as a unit, we have started to review what we proposed, where we can start to make reductions, and obviously, we had a meeting last night as a budget subcommittee. I know we have another one next Monday.
Monday night.
We'll continue to meet as a budget sub and have a refined budget for the towns later on in the spring.
Great, thank you very much. Before we open it up for questions.
Can I file on that for a second, if I may?
Sure. Mr. Fitzgibbons?
So just in big, big round numbers, because that's a lot more fun than listening to all the detailed numbers, although Mr. Powers hasn't write in his figuratives. If 80% of your cost is people, and that's, and that's driving a 3% roughly increase in cost even before any negotiations happen, there's your two, there's 2.4% right there. We just heard the town manager say, "We can give you 2% more." The state has given us about 1.5% to 2% more, so that's, that's why there's a gap there, I guess, is the way I'd say it in very short terms, and I just want to make sure everyone hears that very succinctly and easily.
I appreciate it, thank you.
I have a question. One of the questions I have is, I know you said that there was $3 to $4 million in the past couple, up historically, but wasn't that during the COVID years and not necessarily historically, or is that historically?
No, so the last two previous years to this budget, so FY '24 and FY '23.
Right, which were both pandemic-like years, I guess. I mean, you're comparing, I mean, that's where the additional money came from, right? If we didn't get that much in the past?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I would just say is, the state algorithm, how they funded schools, has changed under the Student Opportunities Act, so that is why we saw the increase. This $2 to $3 million had nothing to do with COVID and Ursa dollars at all. It actually was state funding and the way they've changed.
And has the formula changed for this year?
The inflation rate was different?
The inflation rate has changed.
So we're still under the Student Opportunity Act for two more years. However, the state uses their state inflation rate, which is not the regular inflation rate, right? This year, it was 1.3, so we barely see an increase based on that. Where the past couple of years, because of more spending by government, it was 4%, I think for the past couple of years. So we did see an increase in that.
Okay, yeah, because that's a 2.5 million dollar loss right there, regardless of your 80 whatever, 2%. Okay. And then what about the circuit breaker number when you talk about the $700,000 special ed, or the $1 million increase?
Yes, so certainly, we'll use our circuit breaker funding to help offset those tuitions as that money comes in.
Okay, thank you. Great.
Do we have any additional questions? Counselor Gallagher?
Thank you, Mr. President. Whoever wants to take the question, I guess, in order for the School Department to continue with your success plan, what are some of the critical needs that you put in that 15% that you really are the most, a top priority of where you would like to see progress in the next school year? Obviously, the ones that you mentioned were fixed costs that you really don't have that much control over, but in order to continue with your success plan, you know, what are some of the areas that you're deficient in, that you need to address in the next budget? And are you, are you losing a lot of teachers to retirement this coming year, and that hurts you as well, or the bottom line is, I guess, what are some of your critical, critical needs?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Gallagher. Okay, to answer? Okay. So in terms of your latter question about retirements, right now, approximately, we're looking at 10 retirements. Certainly, you know, that's, that's a savings there if we were not to fill any of those positions. When we look at the positions that are retiring, we do feel as though we will have to fill most of them, if not all of them, but certainly, as someone retires at the higher end of their salary scale versus the lower end, there should be a cost savings there. I think when we look at some of our initial needs, it really revolves around student aid, and so some of our key positions, we've been fortunate through, the chair had mentioned, receiving ESAR funding, we've been able to add interventionists. So those individuals are providing really one-on-one, small group instruction to students in need that have been identified through some of our screeners, our diagnostic assessments. We've been obviously, you know, hoping over the last couple of years to incorporate them into the operation, operational budget because we knew the grant funding was going away. So I think first and foremost, looking at those interventionist positions. I think second from there, our English learner population is growing leaps and bounds. When I first came to the district in 2015, we were roughly 60 students, 60 EL students, so students that require additional English language support. We're pushing 200 students now, and so we haven't necessarily increased staffing over the last couple of years, so we're seeing another need there, especially at the high school level. That individual, our ESL teacher at the high school, has a caseload of 60-plus right now, and it's just not manageable. And then I think from there, special education, you know, making sure that we are providing, you know, one of our most vulnerable and at-risk populations with the support that they need. So I think really, those first few positions would be key. Obviously, we want to then try to address class size where we can. I think, and I know the School Committee feels this way, and they feel strongly about that, if we were able to reduce class size, we do feel that would have a beneficial impact on our students. When we look at what's maybe hindering us from, from doing that beyond, say, the finances, is one of it's space. Believe it or not, even if the council and the town of Rainham were to give us unlimited amount of money and say, hire as many as you can, we just, we don't have the room for them. Even though we have a brand-new school down on South Street, there really wasn't, and this wasn't a district or a town, because I know Mr. Dutton pushed back and Mr. Swenson at the time on this, they only really allotted one additional classroom for a grade level in the new school, so it didn't really factor into the potential growth that I think we were anticipating and that we're seeing now. And then same thing on the Rainham side, all of the classroom space is being used. Obviously, what could be done, and I think this would be, you know, detrimental if we did that, but if we had to, taking away art rooms, taking away music rooms, any type of additional space like that, but those, you know, those environments are, you know, safe havens and for many of our students, and I wouldn't want to take those away from them. Obviously, if we had to, such as during COVID, we had to use a lot of those learning spaces, but I think if we don't have to, we shouldn't. So I think that's one of the other priorities for us, is to see how we can lower class size, but even if we were able to add a number of teachers at the lower grade levels, we couldn't add a significant amount because of that.
Thank you.
Mr. Powers, if you may. Another way that we've tried to manage, I know parents have been reaching out to us, you know, probably the towns as well, about class size and the extreme growth we've had the past couple of years. We have tried to manage that, especially at the kindergarten and lower grade, like foundation grade level. In the last budget, not last year's, but the prior budget, we did add one ESP, Education Support Professional, to every kindergarten classroom. So that's another set of hands for every kindergarten teacher with students that are, you know, coming into the school, trying to learn how to read. That has showed a marked benefit to all of our students, all of our teachers. We're hoping, since space is a problem, to try and get that into our first grade. Those foundation grades are so needing that extra support when they're trying to move up, so we're hoping, starting that at the kindergarten level and moving up, that would, you know, help those teachers and help those students as well. And like he said, we really want to focus on the high-needs population. We hosted a budget presentation by Tracy Novick of the MASCE. She came in and did a budget presentation to us, specific to Bridgewater Rainham, you know, where our funding comes in, answering basic questions, because we do have some new committee members. But one of the things she did highlight is, in the past five to 10 years, our high-needs English language learners, low-income students have markedly increased. That special education or low-income, those kids really need the resources, that we need education support professionals, we need special education, we need interventionists. You know, that population is, I think, at, Mr., in your, was it 40% now?
Yes, 40% of our student enrollment is considered high-needs.
So we really need to focus on that percent of the population as well, I think.
Yeah, I'd echo what the superintendent, what Ms. King said is, and the superintendent reminds me, I said this once, and I stand by it, is, you know, how we treat, how we treat our most vulnerable members in our school district is how we should be judged. So that's very important. That said, the other, the other priority to me, and I think most of the School Committee and certainly to the superintendent, is, you know, really making sure that class sizes are as appropriate as possible, given the other resources around us that we, that we have, but, you know, that's, those are, those are the key things that, to me, will drive our student success plan, you know, to be the best we can be and help everybody out to be the best they can be.
Thank you. Do we have any, Counselor Robinson?
Yeah, thank you for the overview and welcome to the meeting today. Oh, I have so many questions, but I don't want to turn this into a two-hour meeting, but we have a historic pattern of, you all need additional funds, and I don't think anyone would disagree, the more that we can invest to help our kids, the better off all of us would be. We unfortunately have been limited in how much has been able to be funded. So how have you been managing through, I mean, it becomes like a cumulative effect, right? So between increased costs, deferred maintenance issues, which I'm sure you have as well, issues around retirements and salaries, et cetera, where are you then making the trade-offs? We talk about budget every year, but one thing that would be helpful, too, is to understand sort of like, well, what did you do last year, since we weren't able to fund everything that, that was requested? So that's the first question, then I have a couple more, sorry.
Sure, happy to answer that. So just off the top of my head, I mean, just looking at building the FY '24 budget, we had reduced some of our, I say things, materials, goods, services, by about $1 million in what we refer to as our 2000 series, which is basically all of our instructional materials, so any school supply, anything from paper to pencils to textbooks, we had reduced that by about $1 million. And then on the facilities and maintenance side, it was under that number, but closer to, it was about $700,000. I'd have to go back and look to get you that exact number. So, you know, we're really trying to, one, in FY '25, make up those items that we had to cut, and then certainly, so one, to restore those, and then, you know, move forward and propel that, but we know that if not, if we're at least back to that FY '24 number, and now we have to make up this deficit, we're probably even reducing further. So that does mean, like you said, deferred maintenance, and, you know, obviously, we look to have some cost savings by having our own internal maintenance staff, so we have a plumber, we have an electrician, we have a carpenter, so a lot of the work can be done internally. There are certain maintenance preventative and reactive that we have to go through vendors, such as the HVAC, but even that, that's something that we're looking at through the budget process. Could we include an HVAC person to help save some of those costs from going out to a vendor? We're looking at, again, some of the other cost savings, even just for educational services. We use some of our collaboratives to provide some of those. Again, there could be a cost savings instead of using, and there's, you know, benefits to using a vendor. Obviously, you're not on, responsible for benefits, you're not responsible if the position has to go away for unemployment, so there's many benefits to that. However, there's also a cost savings if we're able to bring some of our own people on board. However, we have to make sure we can keep them and sustain them, because then we'll be in that same situation where now we're having to pay benefits and possibly unemployment. So I think, you know, what we really did last year, we didn't add any new positions. We were able to add some positions through breakage, through attrition, you know, when somebody retired, we had a number of retirees last year, and the savings there, but what we were very mindful of is to make them only one-year positions, because we knew we probably wouldn't be able to support them. So if any funds did become available, we didn't commit to those positions long-term. Certainly, I think we would advocate that they are long-term positions, but we know just in fairness to, one, the employee, and, two, the budget process, we didn't want to make, we didn't want to overcommit.
Okay. And so staying on positions and adequate staffing, so were you, so did you stay steady, or do you have a bunch of open racks since you weren't able to add? Were you able to retain as well?
We were, we were. Actually, you know, thankfully, we didn't have, I mean, certainly, every year, you have pluses, pluses and minuses, so, you know, some staff resigned to either go work for another district.
What was the percentage?
I don't have that, no, man, I can certainly get that to you.
Okay. What about in total enrollment for the district? What about in total enrollment for the district?
So our enrollment continues to go up, which is, I, I don't think, you're, you're hearing many districts statewide talk about a decrease in enrollment, potentially having to close schools. I think we're, we're, we're the anomaly, we're not seeing that. If anything, post-COVID, our enrollment has jumped and continues to go up each year, and I know Ms. King talked about it, the percentage of our students in that high-needs category has also increased. We're going up, you know, I think from the last school year to this school year, just to start, we were plus 100, and then even from October 1, when we published our October 1 numbers until January, we were another plus 100. So students are moving in the district on a daily basis.
So what's the percentage increase in enrollment?
I don't have the percentage, I can give you the numbers.
The numbers?
Calculate it. So for last year, we were, I'm sorry, so for this year, 5,582.
Yep.
Last year is 5,482. The year before, so 2122, was 5,392. And the year before that, 2021, was 5,272.
Okay.
And Mr. Powers, as of October 1st this year, that 5,582 is actually up to 5,680.
Yes, we.
To date, we're up even more.
Right. So you.
Roughly 2.5% here.
Yeah, so it's pretty fair to say, you're really struggling with student-to-staff ratio, period, regardless of space, because of just the increase and the being flat in terms of being able to hire. But then the challenge on top of it is, even if we were able to fund it, you still wouldn't have space to.
Any cases, yes, depending on the grade level.
Okay. Where, where does that impact most, like Bridgewater, Rainham, which buildings?
So currently, right now, just to give an overview, Merrill and La Liberty on the Rainham side, they're both at capacity, without taking those additional rooms that I spoke about. Rainham Middle School, we do have room to accommodate increased enrollment. On the Bridgewater side, Mitchell, again, we have one additional classroom for first grade and for second grade. The additional kindergarten classroom right now is being used for the base preschool program, so if we had to, we could certainly find a home for that. All the preschool classrooms are being used. At the Williams, we do have space. If you remember, obviously, a number of years ago, we had four grade levels at the Williams, now we only have three, so we do have space there to accommodate an increased enrollment. And same thing for Bridgewater Middle School, obviously, there's three grades there, at one time it was a four-grade high school, and then the high school has space as well. So once we were able to open the new school, it did allow us, at least at the intermediate middle school, high school level, to really free up space.
Right. And then, is any of this space impacted by the fact that deferred maintenance issues or anything like that?
No.
Oh, okay. Sorry. Oh, sorry. Okay, sorry. All right. I have other questions, I'll follow up by it. Thank you.
And just a quick note, I do know some of the public has come in for the regular town council meeting. We have about five minutes or so left on this, and then we'll transition to the other Do we have additional questions from the town council? Counselor Lindy?
More a comment than a question. First of all, thank you for all the clarity and with all the information. I found the presentation informative when I went there and learning a little bit more today, and I just want to thank you folks for your service and also the members of the finance committee. We're all in this together.
Thank you.
Mr. Moore, I would just like to make one comment. I think one, you know, I pulled the numbers today and I've looked at them over the years, one thing, again, we are very appreciative of the support the town, what the towns give us. You know, one thing to really look at, if you have it, is the per cost, the per pupil spend. And if you look at the districts that are comparable, you know, the Department, the Department of Education pairs districts together that are comparable, so population size, that, all different factors, they pair them together. If you really look at that, we, per pupil spend, we are one of the, we are the lowest.
Yeah.
Even the state average right now, for, for '22, the state average, the state average per pupil was $20,000, approx., $20,134 per pupil. For '22, for BR, we were $15,112.
And is that generally considered to be a good indicator of student outcomes? So you see schools with low per, per pupil spend also having less desirable outcomes? Or are there, are there schools that have lower spend but, but higher outcomes? I don't know that.
Okay to answer? So if, if you were to look, the state identifies what they refer to as DART districts, D-A-R-T, and those are comparable districts, as the chair said, not so much enrollment, could be enrollment, but a lot of the makeup of the district and historical information. So when you look at our DART districts, we are the lowest per pupil expenditure, and we're actually, not in every category, but in almost every category, the lowest-performing DART district as well.
Okay.
And if I may, just to further answer Mr. Moore's question slash comment, there's a lot of cities especially that spend a lot per pupil, that may not, that may have worse outcomes, however you define outcomes, you didn't say what they were, but whatever outcomes they are, they may be worse than what you see from Bridgewater, Rainham. A lot of that is driven by demographics, by economic need, et cetera, in those places, so, you know, that's why we have the, the DART districts, because they're supposed to represent comparable communities in those demographics and et cetera, et cetera, so that you're not comparing yourself to, you know, a school district that might have forgot where $14 million was laying. I'm just kidding. Don't be laughing. But, but, you know, so, and to, and to the superintendent's point, when you do that, when you kind of try to control for that, it does look like we're performing less well than those comparable districts, so it's, 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 it's obviously, it's a nuanced question, but.
And it sounds like it's a nuanced metric, but I do recognize that, you know, it makes logical sense to me that if we spend more, we would expect better outcomes. So my last question, and echoing what others have said, we really do appreciate you taking the time to walk us through it. It was a great presentation, I attended the school committee meeting, and really, you guys really went into depth in the school committee, asked great questions. So I encourage anyone who, who hasn't seen maybe the video of that, to look at that, I think you'll get some good background. But I think for me, one of the things I'm just sort of trying to understand, it looks like historically, year over year, your budget goes up maybe about $5 million or so through all of the various sort of mechanisms, and you're asking for a $15 million-ish increase this year, and what I, what I'm trying to figure out is, would that $15 million get us, just allow us to stay with the status quo? Does it actually get us to the best, you know, outcome? Like, does that solve the problem and all of a sudden, like, you know, we are getting all the outcomes you expect? Or are we so far behind that $15 million just gets us like closer to the status quo? Like, we're not even, you know, kind of where we were years ago?
Great question. I, I think if we were to fund all of those $15 million worth of ass, whether it's positions, things, my expectation, I think your expectation would be that we would see significant outcomes, and I think it wouldn't put us just at status quo, I do think it would move us forward to where we all hope to be. I think you and I had that conversation about a destination district, and that's exactly what I think that 15% increase would, would get us to. Certainly, you know, obviously, we always have to factor in growth and other things, but I, I do think that would not put us at status quo, that would put us above.
Thanks. And then I, oh, sorry.
Just to echo that too, I mean, the $15 million, that's to support the full student success plan. We didn't expect that you would suddenly, oh, you know, here you go, here's $15 million next year, but to fully, you know, support all of our teachers, support all of our students, this really focuses on our, like Mr. Fitzgibbons said, our vulnerable populations, our youngest children, our students that are low-income, that may need extra help with the language, with special education, but it also has things in there, music for the high school, we've had parents advocating for that, foreign language at the middle school, which is my hill that I've been on for many years, things like that to support not just our vulnerable population, but also all of our students that want the enrichment things that we want to be able to give them, different things at the high school that Mrs. Watson has asked for. You know, we want all of our students to graduate and be successful, but maybe they're going to college, maybe they're going to the workforce, maybe they're participating in their community. We want to give them as much support as we can, so this is, this is our vision of how we could do that with this, this plan, which is a five-year plan. So it's not necessarily, you know, right this moment, but in five years, these are the things that we see right now that these kids need.
That's like the correction path, how do we correct back to what?
If I may, Mr. Moore, you were at the presentation, so you heard me ask the same, almost the same question to the superintendent, and I'll repeat, hopefully what he told me was, I said, "Will this get us there?" And then we can just do inflation and student growth, and after that, and he, he said, "No, we'd still have a way, a ways to go." He didn't give a number, which is fine, because we don't know it, but it wouldn't, it wouldn't get us there and then we're good. There would be next year something probably more than growth and inflation that we'd need to, to add in, so that, that's my expectation anyway. I think that's what Mrs. King said as well, that it'll be a really good start, it's getting us on our way there.
Mr. President, can I, can I ask one?
Yeah, please. Counselor George.
So thank you very much for all the information. Just a question on the per pupil spend, does that number also include the chapter 70 and 71 monies that go to the districts in that calculation? Or is that percentage strictly where the city or towns are contributing to that budget?
So it's, it's the funding divided, basically divided by student enrollment, so.
So my understanding is, at least for this year, the proposed increase for chapter 70, 71 is around 4%? 3%? No, I'm sorry. 4%? We're getting 1.5?
1.7.
So it is accurate to say that there are other city and towns out there that are getting higher state aid, that are spending more money towards the students. So I just don't want it to come across, as I've heard in the past, that, you know, the towns underfund and don't pay for education. I know we need more, but I also like to say that we'd like to see a lot more from the state as well. Thank you.
Thank you, good point, Counselor George. Okay, I think we are a little bit past time, I appreciate everyone's patience. I would like to thank everybody who attended, the finance committee, the school committee, and the town council. I think at this time, maybe we could close the.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, great.
Thank you so much for having us.
Yeah, thank you very much. I'll close the, the town council, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move, so move.
Right? Do we have a second? We have a motion, a second, all those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed say nay. Motion passes, we are adjourned.